A couple of very quick announcements. So, this meeting is being recorded for later showing by Amherst Media but is not being live broadcast due to some technical issues. We also have Mr. Dummling will not be attending tonight's meeting. He had another commitment. And Ms. Spitzer will actually be about 10 or 15 minutes late to this meeting, but she will be coming a little bit later. Still, there is a quorum, so we can proceed with our meeting. First order of business is to approve the minutes of March 19th, March 26th, which is Amherst only, and then March 26th, which was a joint meeting with Palom and the Region. So, I will give the members a few minutes to review each of these, and then we'll take motions for each of these together if you would like, or we can do them separately, but as efficient as we can be. Just for the community's information, these have been sent to the committee prior to this meeting, but I just want to give people a chance to look them over. Mr. Nakajima?
I move the approval of the Amherst School Committee Meeting Minutes for March 19th, March 26th for Amherst only, and for March 26th, 2019, Joint Meeting with Palom and the Region.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or edits on these minutes? Okay, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Wes Moreland, once again, for putting these together. Next item on the agenda is Committee Announcements. Are there any announcements from the committee? Seeing none. I will move to public comment. So, if anyone is here and wishes to make public comment, you are welcome to do so. We don't have microphones tonight, but you are welcome to come to the front here, state your name, and you have three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing no one coming up for public comment, I am going to close public comment. We don't have a gavel, so I'm just doing the makeshift version of that. I don't expect anyone to be rushing in here. It is a little bit before our normal time for public comment, but if anyone comes in afterwards and is dying to make a public comment, we will certainly allow that to happen. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Update. Dr. Morris?
Sure. I wonder if the seven degrees southern weather has something to do with it.
Maybe just a little bit, yeah. It does feel like spring today, doesn't it?
It really does. So, a couple of quick ones, and then I had some of them written up, and some I'll just do early. But in terms of what's written, last week on Thursday, I attended a meeting hosted by the Collaborative Educational Services and the Chairs of the Joint Committee on Education, which is Senator Jason Lewis and Representative Alice Peish were there. That was a really good opportunity for superintendents in Western Massachusetts to share the current funding challenges that we feel face, and they're different in different communities. For instance, Granby faces different challenges, or Hampton, which faces more analogous but slightly different challenges than us here in Amherst. But it was related to one of the topics later on the agenda about regionalization. There was really good dialogue, I thought, on that particular topic, especially given that it sometimes gets presented as what should happen in Western Massachusetts. And multiple superintendents, myself included, talked about some of the challenges of regionalization efforts of local communities. And it was a second event that was for some school community members from our area attended, as well as community members and community members, so I enjoyed being there. Right before the break, there was Autism Awareness Night, so I want to thank CPAC for their role in organizing that event. And what felt particularly distinct this year, and I don't think Dr. Brady was in the audience for her work as well, was, you know, I think very appropriate as an Amherst School Committee meeting, there were a number of elementary students who were at the forefront of actually formally presenting who they are, what their experience is like, and the things that helped them work in school. And then I think in the past, my experience has been it's a little more secondary focused, and I think for logical reasons that's the case, but it was really impressive to see some students, particularly students from Fort River Elementary, be able to talk about what their life is like being in a specialized program, and what works for them, and what they've learned about themselves throughout the years. And these are relatively young, not fifth or sixth grade children, pretty young children, so it's neat. So, thank you, Dr. Brady, and thank you, CPAC. After all the work that the committee and the community did on the statement of interest, I just want to be really clear, we like triple-checked that they got everything that we sent them, and they did. So, now we're in the holding zone until December 11th, when they share the results of which statements of interest they will accept and which they won't. But they got all of our documents and all of our documents, so.
And just if I can, Dr. Morris, one quick comment for the committee. So, Representative Mindy Dom has agreed to appeal to the MSBA in her official capacity as our representative, being made aware of, you know, her staff actually were at some of the listening sessions, Senator Joe Comerford as well. And I have agreed to put together just, you know, some brief sort of factual talking points for them on the conversations that we had, both with the community and here in this committee, and I'll be sharing that with them this Friday coming up, so that they can in turn take it to the MSBA. And we actually just think that it's a really positive thing for our representatives to be doing at a statewide level, so just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Last night, Carter Farms' third graders successfully presented an initiative called the Read Around Town Project. They presented to the Amherst Town Council at their formal meeting last night. It was on the agenda. There was a unanimous vote by the council members to support this, and really it installs, you may have seen these, kind of like free libraries, their book boxes, particularly at bus stops in town, so that as people are traveling, particularly those who rely on public transportation, that there's opportunities for an exchange of books and for reading to be part of the whole town's life. And this was an idea that staff worked on, or students worked on with staff, and just really neat, and I think it was the word I got from the town manager and a couple of town councils was the highlight of their evening last night, how those students present their work and to be approved at the town council.
That's great.
Yeah, very nice advocacy. We had Elementary Science Night also, it was the week before break. This was completely parent organized, parent initiated. We just provided some technical support and some thoughts about, you know, we provided buses to different housing complexes, so that there was greater access. But I wasn't able to attend, from what I understand from those who were, it was great. We had a lot of just scientists in the community who offered their kind of individual talents and knowledge to our young, relatively young students. And then 150 families come, which was the perfect number, because it's always hard to know how big a space you need and how many tables you need until you get there, so that was actually pretty much exactly the target, which never happens. But they were updating, they want to do it again, and even perhaps expand for next year. So, again, just very appreciative of the resources within our parent guardian community, our larger community. One thing that I'm here, and it's not just a regional item, although perhaps it comes up a little more often at the region, or talked about at the region, is that we were awarded a grant from the state, a diverse teacher workforce grant, that we applied for a couple of months ago, and that'll provide support for our current parent educators, who we are working with to get licensure with MTO courses and some course credits. We're still working on the details, because what you apply for and what you get in terms of the funding isn't always exactly the same, so we're still working on that. Mr. Magano was actually, and his staff were working on some fine details with that this afternoon, but we're thrilled to get in, thrilled to have Thessie's ongoing support in this initiative, because they have reorganized themselves to try to support districts and make it a statewide initiative instead of just purely local initiatives, so we're appreciative of that. The last item I wanted to, on the back, you can see that Black Scholars Rising is coming up on May 3rd. All of you are welcome to attend that event. But the bolded point on the agenda, so at the Regional School Committee meeting, the Amherst School Regional School Committee meeting, I presented two weeks ago, yes, that I'd like to explore an analysis of the sixth grade, where the sixth grade students are educated, so currently in the Amherst Public Schools, our sixth graders are educated out of three schools, and for a number of reasons which I articulated at that meeting, I'd like to, and I have started to form a standing, excuse me, steering committee or steering board, to work with a consultant to look at what would it look like in terms of curriculum, what would it look like in terms of social-emotional development, what would it look like in terms of leadership, and what would it look like in terms of staff, I guess, some of those critical areas. So, to be really clear, and I think it, the italics are underlined, it's something I usually don't do in emails, that this is not because we've made a decision or we think it's a good idea, it's actually, we did that facilities you study at the region, we understand the space needs and limitations, and we want to take the next step of saying, what would that programming look like? Yes, the space needs we have good to handle on, but what would this do for the education of sixth grade students? And what we'd like to do is come back to the committees next winter with, this is what it looks like for multiple committees to weigh in and their thoughts about. But I wanted to highlight, because that wasn't a joint meeting we had the last, when this was talked about, the last, the most recent time, just to make sure that in the Amherst School Committee meeting it was known. And if anyone's interested, I think we're taking nominations until May 7th, or 8th?
I believe so.
Yeah, something like that. We've gotten good response to date from both staff members and community members. We're also looking for some students, more at the middle school level, if we can work out the logistics of elementary school students, we will do that. But we have a nice sized group already, who are looking to dig into this work, which was starting, it will start in mid-May.
Dr. Morris, has there been anything posted online or shared that how community members can actually apply to participate in this, that they would like to?
Sure, yeah.
That we can share out as a committee?
Absolutely. So, I can ask Ms. Wes Moreland to resend the email that went up to the community to the committee, so that if it's forwarding to people who may not have gotten that, maybe we can do that.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And just on that point too, I think this is a topic that obviously, as Dr. Morris mentioned, has come up at the regional level. We want to make sure we keep floating it for the Amherst School Committee, even though there's no decisions to be made right now, but just, you know, future updates to be brought back for this committee and also for the community if they want to engage at this level, because this is one of those things that we don't want it to surprise anybody. You know, it comes along, and it's a really big deal, and it's going to have an impact on a lot of folks and their families and students, obviously. So, we just want to make sure that, you know, people are fully aware and that we're bringing this up as often as we can. So, perhaps not, you know, anytime in the very near future, but sometime in the late summer or something, we can look to just get a quick update from you, much in the same way, Dr. Morris, if that's okay with you.
I think it'd be great. Just one other thing to share is that, one of the things I've been pleased with, with the early response to the request for participation, has been a relatively equal number of elementary and secondary parents, elementary and secondary staff who have volunteered to be a part of this. And we're intentionally having elementary and secondary building-based administrators as part of the steering committee, because we think it's, well, it's a regional, it's come through the region, and we really want to have more voices in, because that's the point of the stuff.
Great.
Yeah, I would actually, I would really welcome at a future Amherst School Committee meeting, whether it's the next one or whatever's appropriate, having you update us on, and when I say composition of the committee, I don't mean literally tell us all the names, but when you have the composition and the breakdown of the composition between folks who are more closely associated with the elementary level and the regional level, and maybe even different kinds of roles that they have, and then if, as you're getting it, and if you have it, like, if this were like a sake of argument, a late May, early June meeting discussion item, if by then you had a sense of how you're exploring some of the academic and programmatic issues that are associated at the, obviously for this venue, in particular the elementary level, for those students, it would be great just to hear it, so that as people entered into the summer, forgive me for saying this, but again, like always, the rumor mill goes around about how is the decision being made, who's involved, what are they really looking at, is this driven by the middle school, is it driven, is it really looking at it from an organically, from a perspective of what sixth graders are experiencing, or fifth and sixth graders? Knowing that by the end of the year, this year, we could at least be informed and then lay out how that's being done, I think would be really helpful, because just even, not to sound funny about this, but even though you mention this sort of almost as an afterthought, that you've gotten really robust outreach from both the elementary level and the regional level for participation, I wouldn't even put that as an afterthought. I think that's like, that's a really important thing for people to know right out in front.
That's the highlight, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, you can do that.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Morris. So, moving us along, the next item on the agenda is Discussion of Infectious Disease Policy and Procedures. I know it's not going to be a surprise to the committee or to anyone watching, that there have been, there's been a lot of concern raised, and rightfully so, among many different communities, including this one, about some of the measles outbreaks that we have had, but also just more generally, I think, thinking about our, you know, our policies on this topic, because it is in the news so much, and because we know that there's some long-term impacts, public health impacts, in our schools around vaccination and, you know, sort of related discussions. So, Dr. Morris and I thought it made sense to put this on our agenda for tonight for discussion. We also, in reviewing, excuse me, the policy for the schools on this topic, it is Policy JLCD, which the committee has a copy of in front of them, we realized that this has not been reviewed or approved since 1996, which is, you know, a very long time to not have a conversation on this. So, for all those reasons, it just seemed to make sense to bring this before the committee tonight, you know, and I think obviously we have a protocol for dealing with policies like this. I'm not intending that the committee is going to discuss this policy in particular and review that, typically we go to a policy subcommittee. But anyway, with that introduction, I will hand it over to Dr. Morris.
So, I really want to thank, I think it is a topic that's very live. I've shared with some of you that the area I grew up in is right now sort of the epicenter of this discussion, both from a public health perspective and actually both, and from a legal perspective. So, I've been attuned to it for this area, but also attuned to it just because I have a lot of family that still live in the area, in that area. And so, I really want to thank the town of Amherst and the nursing staff in our schools, because one of the things that's been really clear long before this topic became as live as it is at the moment, is that there's a lot of collaboration, and that's been critically important in terms of the public health department of the town of Amherst and our local schools. So, I want to start from that place, that we're coming from, an orientation of cooperation, which isn't always the case in every community, sometimes there's a gap, and I feel like we catch those gaps because of our staff, but also the town staff. So, with me and people who are going to do most of the talking through what our policies and what are really what our procedures are, and what new policies in terms of school policy. Today is Jennifer Brown, who is, can you remind me of your formal title?
Yeah, I'm the Public Health Nurse for the town of Amherst.
Yeah, and Julie Fetterman, who is, works with Jennifer, couldn't be here today, but was here when we were putting together the slide and going through our, reviewing what our procedures are. And Robin Supranat, who is the nurse at high school, but the head nurse, lead nurse for the district, also contributed to that.
And I also want to introduce Dr. Steve Hickman, who's our school physician in the district.
Yeah, and thank you for being here tonight. And also Dr. Brady, who also participated and is connected to this from, in her roles in these services. So, really what we tried to do, and then I'll turn it over to the folks closer to the work, was kind of, we had a long conversation, and we said, okay, what are the buckets of work that we want to share with the committee and the communities? The first one's really, how do we encourage immunization participation? And we had a lot of dialogue about that, because in Massachusetts, you can't force someone, there are these exemptions that people are able to take, but we're also not neutral. It's not that we're neutral arbiters in saying, yeah, whatever you want to do, that is not the approach that we've taken from a public health perspective. We respected individuals and families' desires, but we tried to communicate information throughout the way. The second is, how do we track? So, if there was, there was an issue, how do we track who is immunized and who is not, so that we have that information internally and the nurses have that? And that's important, not just in terms of the most recent outbreak, which the measles thing is the thing you see on the news. It's actually always something that we need to, need to be able to know from a public health perspective. And then the third piece is, what's the planning for the outbreak? So, if there was to be sort of what's going on in my old neck of the woods, what would be the steps and procedures that we'd have? So, we thought those would be like the three buckets of conversation. If you want to comment a little bit on the policy at the end, that's probably something that I can take the lead on talking about, but I think at this, I'll turn it over to our folks about encouraging immunization participation. So, Robin, do you want to start that? Yeah, I'll slide, sorry.
So, if you want to come up over here, that way the camera can get you more easily. It's sort of awkward. Usually there's a microphone over here.
Just stand here.
Just stand.
All right. So, we obviously follow the regulations that the Department of Public Health sets out in collaboration with the CDC, and immunizations are required at registration. So, when a student comes into register, we collect the immunization record from them, and we continue to review this process throughout the year. Sometimes we have students come in with partial immunizations, and we look at families to track through healthcare providers, through previous schools, to collect the information, and then enter into our database, which can tell us in a moment where a student stands with immunization status. And the immunization requirements change as a kindergarten level and then again at seventh grade. So, we spend a lot of time communicating with families, sometimes with translators, it could be email, it could be a phone, encouraging that to get their students immunized. If we have a student who comes new to the district with no healthcare, local healthcare provider, we'll work with Julie and Jennifer at the Amherst Health Department, they have a monthly immunization clinic, and Jennifer's been great to kind of on-demand immunize kids, so we're not holding them out of school, we're getting them into school as soon as we can. And then we collaborate with Dr. Hickman as needed. So, there's two, two ways students can be in school if they're not fully immunized. And one is a religious exemption, and a family would need to write on an annual basis a statement saying that due to their sincere religious beliefs, they won't be vaccinated in retirement. The other is a medical exemption, which a physician needs to write stating that there's a contraindication, or whatever the health condition makes students to be vaccinated. So, we do update those annually, that was starting this past fall, the Department of Public Health recommendation. And then when we receive the information from the families, we then return correspondence to let them know that in the event of a community of vaccine-preventable disease in the school, their child could face exclusion per the guidelines of the Department of Public Health. So, that's what we do. We spend countless hours working with families trying to get kids immunized, because some of the series, vaccines are a series of three, so they may be getting them out at several months, so that takes time, but we work on it year-round. Summer school nurses collect that information as kids are registering in the summer, and then, as I said, we process that through the year.
Anything that you'd like to add? You don't need to, but I just wanted to give you that opportunity. Any questions before, or questions to tracking mechanisms?
I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to hold them until I'm done.
Sure. Yeah, sure. So, we have a database called SNAP for the nurses, and it's, we're reporting immunizations, and it's programmed to look at immunization, the age of the student, the time between vaccines to make sure that the student is compliant. And as I said, you know, in just a minute, we can pull up a list of students who are out of compliance and students who have exemptions. We also are just starting to work with the MIIS, it's a state database, Massachusetts Immunization Information System, is what it stands for.
Well done.
And we're looking at a potential coordination between our program, our software program, and the state program to help fill in some of the blanks as needed. But we are able to look at the state system for a student who maybe is vaccinated in another area, doesn't have the records, and we can, Jennifer is using that currently right now, so we can work apart to get that information, but starting in the fall, we'll leave all the nurses with high access to that database. And as I said, we collect exemptions yearly, and we do work, students are not supposed to be in school on day one if they're not completely vaccinated. We do have, use a grace period, because we need to have time, obviously, to get people together, to have communication, families set up translation if that's needed. And then at some point in the early fall, we work with Dr. Morris, and he's sent out exclusion letters, telling families that their student is out of compliance for whatever vaccine is, and that we set a date, and the date we set is generally the day after an immunization clinic at the Amherst Health Department.
I think the only thing I'd add is that the number of students, I'm always surprised, you've been doing this a while, so maybe you're not, I'm always surprised at the number of students on the first day, who don't have all their documents and paperwork, and it really dwindles because of the good work of our nurses and the town. So, we don't exclude many students in the end, but the.
In the, very few students.
Yeah, but the delta between who is, on day one, how many students would be theoretically excluded, and where we are later is pretty significant. So, I just want to thank, you know, the nursing staff at all the schools for incredible amount of phone calls, working, as you said, with translators, working with the town, working with pediatricians' offices and health offices. It's a tremendous amount of work that nursing staff does.
Yeah, but obviously very important work, particularly in this community. Would you have, do you want to?
I was just going to say, you know, we provide the immunizations.
Stand up, sorry.
Public Health Nurse Jennifer. We provide the immunizations like Robin, and like we're discussing. We provide them, but then a big component of what we do is education to get them into a primary care provider. So, we, they're here, we want them at a provider, and we're sort of in the middle, we're not just the stop. So, we work hard to get them health insurance, maybe we're John Listante House somewhere.
And the last one was spending, I'm going to break, because I know there was some questions that have come about what are the steps that are taken that aren't visible, because not going to, what we haven't had to do with this at the current time, but how do we actively plan in ways that aren't, again, aren't visible but incredibly important?
Yeah, yeah, and that's public health, it's a lot of hard work behind the scenes, it's invisible until something like this comes out, and we love talking about what we do. So, local and state health officials drill potential outbreaks, that's a big component of what we do. We work under umbrella from the Department of Public Health, we have the Hampshire Public Health Preparation Coalition, we have Health and Medical Coordinating Coalition here, we have UMass Drills. So, we have emergency dispensing site drills, we have the CDC come up and work with us, we do tabletops. We also do drills that are, you know, live at the Mullins Center, and we have everyone out taking up a role. So, the second thing is we do, is when there is an outbreak, it's confirmed by a state epidemiologist, co-organist, school, state, and local health officials and healthcare providers communicate and collaborate to share information, and then by action plans. Massachusetts has two, but based surveillance and case management system. One is the MIIS, the Immunization System, where we can, we can capture information and transfer to providers. The other one that we use in the Health Department mostly, it's called Maven, and it's the Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiological Network. So, the way that it works is that a communicable disease that's reportable gets, the information is told to the state through either a clinical diagnosis or a laboratory evaluation, and then that information comes out to the town. So, that's how I get the information, what's going on in town. So, from that, we can work to prevent outbreaks and work with the patients virtually, so online, and then there's epidemiologists on call. So, I can call their DPH number, someone picks up, and also we have an epidemiologist right here at UMass, so we communicate with them. The third thing is town, school, and state officials team to implement and continue to evaluate the plan. That's something about disease investigation, where are we now, how is it going, do we need to stop, get more information, and reevaluate, and then take another course? And then we communicate the plan with the community and family members, and we have all the ways of communicating, we collaborate, you know, with the schools, information goes to families, we have alerts, we have media statements, and then we can go online with information that works. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
So, can I maybe mention, it's a very quick thing in the policy, and I want to be conscious that it's not a policy subcommittee, but it actually is relevant to, I think.
Well, can we get a chance, the committee, just to see if there's any questions or comments?
Perfect.
For us, before we do that? Absolutely.
Sure. So, if you could help me, and I guess part of this is because this is also the first public discussion we've had of this subject, I just wanted to know if you could help me with our current rate of immunization, whether or not the rates of immunization are different elementary schools are satisfactory, and I guess you, I mean, without rattling through every last kind of shot a person gets, I recognize we could be here all evening, but just if you could, that would be a wonderful thing to know. And then the second thing, I guess, would be the rate at which families are choosing to exempt their students, their children, for immunization, and I guess it's useful And I guess it's useful to know whether that's based on medical advice or whether it's a matter of religious conviction. Because, and I say that because of the obvious observation that for those, if you told me that there were 4% that were not immunized at a given school, but 99% of them were because of medical reasons, then you'd sort of nod your head and say, well, you know, I'm happy for those families that they're able to find that out, right? If you found out, the segue of argument, that it flipped the other direction and 70% were for other reasons of conscience, then it would make me want to ask, my next question would be, which is what kind of, when we're doing outreach, what kind of materials do we have and what venues do we have to try to talk to parents about the value of immunization? So beyond the requirement, why is this a good thing to do? Why is it a good thing to do for your child in particular, but also beyond that, why is it a good thing to do for even not your kid, but for other kids? And I know that was, there was three quick questions or long questions, but I wanted to throw them out there because in some ways they're sort of table setter questions about not just what are we doing in particular or how do we do it, but what's the outcome that we're right now living with?
Okay. So I just made a second note. The state, the last statistics that are published on the DPH website are, they look at immunization rates in kindergarten and then again in seventh grade. And the last rates were from the 17th, 18th school year. So unfortunately, I didn't have numbers, I don't have rates, but the vast majority, we have, we have five students in the region, that's from pre-K to grade 12, that have medical exemptions. Of that, we have, I'm going to take a quick guess, about 50 students, 50-plus students that have religious exemptions. That's by far what we're looking at. So there's probably 34, the quick math, in the Amherst public schools that have religious exemptions. And in Amherst, there's one student with a medical exemption. So by far, greater than religious exemption. And the state asked us starting this fall to review all our religious exemptions and to ask families to rewrite them. So at that time in the spring, we wrote to families and asked them to revisit the issued immunizations and said we were available to provide education or to consult the healthcare provider if needed. And quite a few, to our surprise, quite a few families had stopped using their religious exemption and started vaccinating their kids, maybe on more of a delayed schedule than the schedule that the state is looking at. But still, I feel we have a significant number, a relatively significant number of students with religious exemptions.
So I have a follow-up question to that and another question kind of related. So for, you know, just in terms of the kinds of materials and kind of outreach that's happening, are there, is there more of a concerted effort to ensure that families who, you know, state that they're a religious exemption, that they are receiving follow-up calls or emails or, you know, is there more of a push to try to, because I, you know, I understand we want to be sensitive to families and their reasons for that. At the same time, it also seems like there's a lot of concern among various communities, not just this one, about the potential for an outbreak, right? And so what are, what steps are we taking to kind of, you know, go above and beyond the normal, you know, protocol with this? And then my other question was related to exclusions. I think that's what you said. So what happens to the excluded students, right? Have there been any sort of students, how many or roughly, and, you know, where do they go?
So when a family, when we ask the family to rewrite a religious exemption, the medical exemptions are pretty standard, so there's not a lot we can do with that. We accept them at face value. We have families that will have religious exemptions to one series of vaccines and not the rest of the vaccines, but we accept the student that they give. And then, as I said, oh, we provide them information that if there's an outbreak, their student could potentially be excluded from school. We do encourage families to talk to their healthcare providers. I know students that are going in for physical exams and other issues, healthcare providers are also reviewing immunization records and talking to families at that point. We do have a lot of information from the State Department of Public Health and from the CDC about the importance of vaccines for your students. And as far as the exclusion rate, very few students have been excluded. I don't know, you know, one or two a year potentially will be excluded until they get their immunizations. And sometimes if they're excluded today, you know, they may be back, so they're visiting, they may be back in the afternoon after we've been to the doctor to get updated or to see Jennifer. But very few students, one or two a year over the years are actually excluded from school. And they're excluded until they get vaccinated.
Just a quick follow-up. Do we keep track of those students? So if a student is excluded, do we keep, you know, tabs on them just until we know what has happened?
We do. As I said, sometimes it's just a matter of hours before they're back from school, but we do continue to work with families. And the only exception is students that come to our district for homelessness. We don't exclude them at all. We welcome them into schools. And then we work with families kind of behind the scene and check through the previous school to see if they have the records of a pediatrician's office and often include records, facts. And if they have nothing, because we do have students coming from other countries who know vaccines at all, then we'll work with Jennifer and the Health Department. Or sometimes if students have, kind of, if families have a connection to the university, we work with UMass Health Services to get children of their students vaccinated to get into our schools.
Thank you. Dr. Morris, did you want to add to that?
Very briefly, the only thing I'd add is students who potentially get excluded is the local health providers are highly aware of the date. They get many calls from our staff and from parents and they have been wonderful in working with us. So not that the town has it, but I know oftentimes it's getting that and I know we've occasionally made exceptions where the doctor's office says, we can't do it on Thursday, we'll do it on Friday. We work with families and their healthcare providers and big kids knowing that there's a date, there's a time when they're, when this immunization is going to happen. And once we get confirmation of that, we try as best we can to actually exclude students from school. And then we've been pretty successful with that.
We've been very successful. And there have been times, unfortunately, where sometimes providers have run out of a vaccine and then we hope they're back too. Thank you.
So I do want to move us on to the conversation about the policy. And I know, Dr. Morris, you were eager to share this, but are there any other concerns?
I just have one question. Yeah, I'm, it's, glad to, because we have somebody from the town today, so I understand that the school committee, so I want to focus on the schools, but I mean, there was recently that, it's that article that mentioned that the rate's very widely in terms of public schools, private schools, and since in this community we have so many of our families are going to contact people who aren't necessarily in the public school. Do we have any concern about the rate in the town itself? Or the larger community?
Do you want to talk to that?
I mean, I would say yes, in terms of concern. In terms of what can be done about it, it's a little more difficult. There are some other schools that have quite high rates of sort of non-compliance, up to 25%. And there are homeschool families that, again, we don't really have much control over. I would just make a comment that I would agree completely with the exclusion. That's the way it is in the pediatric population as well. Probably less than 5% are not immunized because of medical reasons. And 90% plus are because of religious reasons. And we, our practice actually has been debating some of this because there's a move some places to not allow families that don't immunize to be a part of your practice. But we've opted not to do that, in part because of just what was mentioned, that that's an opportunity to keep talking to them. And some are, oh, I have an 18-year-old who's just started getting immunizations on his own because his family never did. And so he is actually beginning a process of getting immunized. So that can happen.
Thank you. Mr. Knutson?
I'll be back. I apologize. I don't know who I'm really directing this to. It could be the superintendent or the town. I, so I remember distinctly when I was a kid, there were all sorts of TV commercials and stuff on around getting immunized. And when I look, think back to that era, because I was too little to remember, you know, it wasn't that long, like after vaccinations became widespread and really common. And I think there was probably a lot of, a really broad level of understanding because vaccinations were like this miracle that reduced infant mortality enormously as well as long-term debilitating conditions that were preventable. The point is they're preventable. And so my guess is if you go back 30 or 40 or 50 years, there was a broader widespread understanding of this sort of really neat miracle of vaccines and how every, micro decisions that individual families make not only benefit their kids, but also benefit a broader community and that it grows over time. And I think when you have people making, what you see microdynamic decisions around not immunizing their kids, if the vaccination rates are up at 98%, they may not be creating any risk for others. They might be posing some risk for themselves, but not for others. And it's only when you start chipping away at that percentage that all of a sudden you're creating a broader public health challenge that exists beyond the kid. And, and so, and so I say all this because I would never want to have a situation in which we encountered families in a way that was anything less than respectful around who they are, what their beliefs are, and how they're coming to that conversation. But it seems to me that we need to do much, much more than we are around re-engaging our community and populace around what like vaccines even are, how they work and how they benefit. And just, you know, I don't know who, I don't know how, I don't know who that'll end up affecting. You suggested that there were actually folks who were having this conversation already of re-engaged in getting vaccinated. So I'll stop except for to say, if this is sort of the end of our conversation about this tonight, I really passionately believe as we're ending this school year and looking at the next, we should be thinking about what more we can do and what more we should do to raise the level of dialogue and education around the value of vaccines. And not, again, in a polemical way, but literally just explaining to people the science and how, what they do and the choices they're making can benefit their child and many people beyond them.
And the State Department of Public Health...
Sorry to interrupt my standing. Thank you.
The State Department of Public Health looks at pockets across the state. And there's a pocket of low vaccine rates in Berkshire County, in Southern Franklin County, out in Dukes County, out in the islands. And so their plan is also to provide additional educational information to providers and families out there, something that they're working on this spring, to raise the immunizations.
Looking forward to hearing also about that here, if there's any opportunity for that as well. Dr. Morris, did you want to?
Yeah, I can be very brief and, and Supran actually alluded to this, but in terms of the policy, so I did look it up. It's based on, it is literally word-for-word national law. That's the reference, but it's, what's in it helps is literally still the law. But I think the thing that perhaps is a little misleading about the law and thus the policy is that there are two exceptions. One was the mention, one that Ms. Supran mentioned, the Bikini Bottom Law, which governs homeless students, provides an exception for this. So if a student comes to us and is with the legal definition of homeless status, then this doesn't apply in that scenario. And the other one is when we take in families, families comp, I should say, leaving, for instance, the most recent homeless Puerto Rico after Hurricane Maria, the clear guidance was students are enrolled in school regardless of, you know, and that was some practical reality about how we can fight immunization records given the state of what was happening, the national disaster of Puerto Rico. So I think the only thing to note is that the law, the first sentence of the, says no child should be admitted to school except, but it really doesn't include the exceptions that are actually legally based that, you know, potentially conflict with this law. So perhaps for the policy subcommittee to look into, but this is still the text of the law. The law hasn't changed since 1996, but the Bikini Bottom and some of those other pieces sort of supersede this particular law in isolated, say, cases and not so isolated in terms of Bikini Bottom in our district to deal with a fair number of students who have status of homelessness.
So it does sound like a good opportunity then, though, to send this to the policy subcommittee, at least for a review, right? To be able to say that we've reviewed it, you know, and bring that back to the committee for a vote and approval. You know, it may be that the policy subcommittee decides that they don't want to make any changes to this and that this is fine the way it is, but I think it's definitely worth the conversation and, you know, I see some nodding heads here, so I'm looking to see if the committee agrees. Great.
I agree.
Okay. Well, unless there's anything else, any other comments or questions from the committee, I think we'll move on this topic. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Really appreciate, it was really, really helpful to hear. Thank you. Okay, moving us on to the next item on the agenda. It's dual-language update. And Dr. Morris, is this new or?
This is, I'll do a quick introduction. I guess. There's a lot of, you know, positive, exciting things to share and I think we did a lot of the heavy lifting of talking about this, actually dating back to last summer, looking back at summer, we had a number of summer meetings, if you remember, about zoning. And so the neat thing for me, first of all, is that Ms. Richardson, Ms. Chamberlain, a number of others, or just the work is coming to fruition thanks to their hard work, but also some of the deep dialogue we had about wanting to have the right enrollment rates and all that is actually really beneficial, the feedback we received from the committee and those dialogues. Now that it's reality, it's, I think, the feedback that I'm receiving and that when we have our conversations is having those things discussed well ahead of time really paid off in terms of where we are and what we're doing. And some good news I'm staffing to share as well, but I'll turn it over to Ms. Richardson.
So just a couple of points. There's lots and lots of things going on, but thanks for having me here. I'll just highlight a couple of things and you can ask what else you're curious about. So one big piece was we did choose a foundational curriculum that we're going to use for the dual-language program. And the curriculum team, which was a subcommittee of the dual-language planning group, so there's different folks tackling different things. We looked at three options in depth, had publishers come and review materials and offered those materials to the school, community, and families to look at and respond to. And the team chose the National Geographic panorama as the sort of backbone of the curriculum. And I listed the reasons there. They're really beautiful, engaging materials. They really attend to diversity and social justice in terms of the content, who's represented, and the kinds of topics that are covered. I should say this is a reading-through-science and reading-through-social-studies curriculum the way that it's framed. So it really aligns well to the standards in both reading and then in our content areas for unit study. And let's say, so it's equitable and available in both languages. Everything is there to be able to work across topics in both English and Spanish. The school in general has been interested in and looking to move towards a more thematic approach of language and content together, so this will really support that piece. Another piece that the team really liked is that our teachers have a lot of expertise and they really want autonomy and flexibility. And so some of the other options we looked at, well, they had more stuff, they felt too scripted or too basally or too, you know, too kind of confining in the way that they lay things out. And this gives us an opportunity to really map the curriculum how we want, do more project-based learning, and build in other pieces that we want to see.
Can I, but do you want to add just about, you know, across all three classrooms?
Yeah.
I think that's a worthy...
Yep. So we've talked about, originally we were thinking really of just purchasing a Spanish curriculum. And we've shifted that thinking because we don't want to feel like the dual-language program is separate from the rest of the school. That conversation came up a bunch with this group, I think, in the fall. And we continue to think about that and feel like we want the Spanish and the English teacher within dual language, but also the monolingual classroom to all be able to collaborate and plan across. So this move will be across the kindergarten. And we're actually looking at including the first-grade team and hopefully getting them on board to start using these materials as well while we're doing the planning and PD and all of that around that so that there can be some unified efforts. So I think that's really exciting because it does get everybody on board. And teachers were excited about the work that this will take. So that's the only thing that I mentioned at the bottom, is that it does require a significant amount of work because it's not basically and it... amount of work because it's not basically, and it doesn't come with all the pieces. But that's where our teacher expertise is going to come into play, to put the pieces together. Something that was interesting for our team is that the rigor of the texts that come with this program are really high, in a way that is exciting and in a way that we know will need to be balanced by leveled text at students' reading level. So that was an interesting piece to look at, just the way different curriculum approached that. There's a lot of research around giving students really high-grade level text, and at the same time, beginning readers, especially in kindergarten, need to start from the foundations. So I think we're looking at how to provide for both of those needs. And the last piece I'll say there is that the phonics decision was to continue with Super Kids in English for all students and to add the Spanish component just for the phonics instruction.
And we're looking, you know, two, the two curriculums in the bottom are the two most commonly used, Spanish language phonics. And you can't, it's not really, just because the phonics system is completely different, it's not like, oh, you can buy this in English and this in Spanish. Like the, the phonics, the subset of phonics is, is different. So they are unique. You wouldn't want to translate it for them for version for a whole host of reasons, but students will learn English or Spanish if you do that. So we're looking to make that decision soon.
Soon, yep. Both are really strong options, so we're not, I'm not feeling worried about it, it's just we have to make a final decision.
So just a quick question for you. Are you curriculum, because it's a new curriculum, what kind of evaluation are you guys working into, you know, just to help decide a year from now, two years from now, whether this is actually being successful, right? Like, you know, what does that look like?
Yeah. And I think like any curriculum, that's an ongoing conversation, right? So we can't, we hope that we'll love it and we'll be able to use it for a long time, but we're going to have to continue to, with all the assessments we normally use with students to see, you know, how is this working? What do we need to shift? What do we need to add? So.
I think the particular challenge to that on this front, and that's why I appreciate Katie's work with MABE, is that the, the curve of language acquisition is different in a dual-language program versus a monolingual program. You know, we've talked about that multiple times here. So when, for the monolingual English class, we would expect a different curve than we would for the dual-language program, particularly in kindergarten, first grade. So I know that there's some work going on at MABE about norming, you know, the expected growth that you could see.
And that's kind of my, I guess my question is really, you know, how does, because yeah, we're not going to have the expertise in that, you know, and I don't expect you guys to come up with a answer right away, but other folks that have been studying this for a while and doing this work, you know, they must have a sense of what is quote-unquote normal or, you know, or expected progress anyway, and if there's, you know, reasons to catch something or change something.
Right. Absolutely. So we do have resources in terms of MABE and other districts that have been collecting that data longer. We're also looking really carefully at what are the assessment points we're going to use in both languages. So there's a lot of thinking about that right now, all the way starting with kindergarten screening. How do we start to think about that for class placement for next year through how are we going to assess well, right, but not over-assess next year and continue to have useful benchmarks that help us, really help inform instruction? And we're also partnering with some folks at UMass around that to help think through that piece.
So this is kind of a related question, and you may be getting to it next, I don't know, in the next slide, but how are you building in moments for collaboration amongst teachers in the fall to? So one question is, what, how's the curriculum doing? But my guess is if this is a really good set of materials, the real question is going to be is how are we optimizing the, the teaching of, right? Like the actual work of translating it. And so part of that's assessing what's going on with the kids, but part of it's also building in, I assume, building in time for the teachers to have checkpoints and reflect in moments and sort of think about what have I been learning, what's been working, what hasn't been working? How are you thinking of that, about that sort of question?
So there's a couple of layers, I guess. One is to have some support for MABE, to do some curriculum mapping and looking at how do we kind of divide up, you know, when we're in a unit about whatever topic, what happens in English, what happens in Spanish, that we think about that. But then there's the day-to-day schedule or the week-to-week really, and the principals at Fort River are working really hard on the schedule right now to figure out, how do we get more team time, right? So we need to have our individual planning time for those teachers as usual, but then we also need time for the partner teachers, we're calling them, right, not co-teachers, but the partner teachers to work together. And then the team of everybody that's working with these students. So they're looking at a weekly additional planning time, and we're, that, that's all in the works, but we can share, you know, kind of how that teases out. We're looking at some flexibility with specials options to provide some time for that.
This gets real sorry, I can't see your face. So this may be getting away ahead of ourselves, but I do want to acknowledge that we have this state of interest that's gone forward. And other than, you know, I'm just seeing some, you know, so like adopting this curriculum impacted the non-dual-language program at Fort River and then in five or so many years potentially, this is all really far down the road, but then it could also spill over potentially to affecting all of the first graders who are in whatever, wherever, however the future school is. So I'm just wondering if there's been any thought given to that piece of this, because if, if the curriculum changes that are happening to enable the dual-language program go really well, and we love these books, that's wonderful, but it also has the potential to trickle down or overflow into the other areas, and that can be negative if they don't go really well.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think we've had brief conversations, this really goes back to what will be on the agenda next time, which is some of the strategic planning work that happened particularly at Wildwood and at Cogger Farm, and how, how much flexibility do we want to offer and autonomy for schools and what do we, we need to do to the system. So we do have those conversations with principals, so that, that people are aware. I think it is, in my opinion, an opportunity, and you know I hate the word pirate, so I'm not going to use it here, but I think some of the benefits of the concept of piloting something is that you do get firsthand experience from students, from staff, from families, about how something's going. I wouldn't call this a pilot because this is not like, oh, we're going to try National Geographic, no, go pattern around a curriculum out. But I think it will give us some, some firsthand experience on how that's worked, because all three available in those schools, we've heard this, or listen to, how do we have more integrated logic-based curriculum. And if this is something that's separate from pure language programming, we're finding is really successful, then there is an opportunity to have that conversation at a bottom.
Right. Yeah, I would just add that we, we know that our curriculum is not currently well-aligned to the new science and social studies standards, so that's work that has to happen across the district. So it is kind of a cool opportunity to say, well, let's see how this works to address some of that. What do we like? What do we not? What do we have to build in? So, yeah. So a couple of pieces on staffing and professional development. Our kindergarten Spanish teacher has been hired, which is wonderful. Girl, you know, starting to feel like, okay, it's, it's still early in hiring season, but it'd be really great. So that's, that's good news, and we feel really excited about her. And then the next steps for hiring, we're looking for bilingual special education teacher, the parent educator for the Spanish classroom will be hired, and that, there are lots of folks within our district and without, you know, so that's a, that should be not too difficult. Maybe the difficulty would be there are too many good people, if anything. And then we're also looking at having a permanent substitute position so that when, that is bilingual, so that when somebody is out in the Spanish classroom, we're not sacrificing Spanish instructional time for that piece.
Yeah. And if I could add just previously to that.
Yep.
So this is looking at having a substitute parent educator position. We do have that in some of the secondary schools. There's, just frankly, there's enough people out on a daily basis where there's never like, oh, yeah, everyone's here, and there's never need for a sub. In those days, it's pretty much probably between the school the size of Fort Rivers with the staff the size of Fort River. Most typically what happens in most kindergarten classrooms is when the teacher's out, our educator takes over for the teacher, and this would be providing a bilingual educator for the classroom, so that the class remains fully staffed. And vice versa, if the parent educator that's assigned to kindergarten is out, that, that we don't lose, there's no loss of instructional, or instructional support in those classrooms.
Specifically in Spanish, because we just know it's easy to lead, you know, blend towards more English throughout the day, so.
I think the only thing I'll add without giving, you know, kind of respect the confidentiality of, of staff is just, we're excited about the person we hired. I haven't left them just the detail on this, it usually happens, but I heard one of the things, and there was both an interview and a mock lesson that was taught, so we could get to see teaching, and it's someone who's, I know, because this, I'm going back to conversations we had a while back, is a native Spanish speaker, but has taught both in Puerto Rico and in Texas, and in Texas in a dual-language program. So not only do you think this person will be a great fit for us here, but also the person has some institutional problematic information that is going to be incredibly important as we move forward, separate from her work with the students that she's teaching. So, yeah, I'm very excited.
Yes. So then the piece below is connected to going back to the grant that we received between Holyoke and Amherst, and one of the big components of that work was partnering with UMass to create a bilingual education program. We're finally at the place of recruiting teachers for that, which is great. UMass and the Department of Education are a little more slow-moving than we like sometimes, but they're both really trying to help us out and make this work within a really tight timeframe of the grant guidelines. So we're looking at a fifteen-credit program that will be offered to a cohort of twelve teachers between Amherst and Holyoke to provide them with the bilingual education endorsement for those who need it, which are those who are teaching in Spanish, or a bilingual education certificate program for those who will be teaching on the English side but still should be gaining the same knowledge and skills. So we're really excited about this opportunity too, and it's largely paid for by the grant, so, yeah.
I think it's also worth mentioning that these programs don't exist across the state. I mean, I think if UMass-
Or like the second one to get approval with UMass.
Exactly. So we're very fortunate to have UMass partners so close because, you know, frankly, there's not been a place to do it, and the likelihood of the geography would work out as nicely as it is is a testament to the UMass College of Education working for life.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I think that'll be a great, you know, the first group will go through the program now, but the program will exist, and so we'll be able to kind of grow more of our educators who are interested in that work going forward. So enrollment is the other update. So of the eighty-eight families that we have kindergarten, registered for kindergarten at this point, just over the whole district, forty-seven were interested in dual language. And then the numbers are there for what the enrollment looks like so far. So we have nine families who are within the Spanish-speaking or bilingual group, eighteen families that are zoned for Fort River that are English speakers, and twenty that are within the Cogger Farm or Wildwood districts that are interested, English speakers. So our next steps are the lottery's coming up next Monday. We're reaching out to families this week to confirm that, with a little bit more information, that they're really interested, just to kind of say, here's what this really means, and here are the benefits, and here are the challenges, and what does that look like, and do you want to talk about it? So that when we go into the lottery, people really feel like they're committed and excited and, you know, what, what they're talking about. Because it's a, you know, it's a new model for people. There's a lot of excitement, which is great, and we want to make sure that people are really thoughtful about it. And another reason for that is that there is so much interest across the, the other school zones that we don't want to have a seat for a Fort River family that then says, actually, if we don't want that seat, we'd rather start to offer it to other folks if, if not everybody would like to participate.
Katie, I just, I think it's worth mentioning, it's not explicit on your slides, but that they've also had a number of opportunities. We've had office hours, we went to different department, I know there's-
Yeah, yeah, well, and I'll mention that too with outreach, but-
Absolutely. But just in terms of the email that went to families, it was also an invitation to an additional office hour, so it's not only relying on electronic and phone communication. There's been opportunities, and there will continue to be opportunities for families who have questions before they want to, you know, commit to having a child in it, kind of be a part, so.
Yeah.
I know you, I know that's on your outreach, but I think it's relevant-
Yeah, no, that's true. Absolutely. So the lottery will happen, but what we've let families know is essentially that anyone in groups one or two is automatically in the lottery because of the numbers at this time. And we'll hold twenty seats, so the remainder of the seats will be held through August first as we continue to do more outreach. We do have a lot of that that has happened and a lot more that's coming up. We've been connected with LSSE to go to some of their events. We've been to, in communication with various preschools, outreach to regional, community action and Head Start, and just everywhere we can find that there are folks who will listen and want to hear more. So I think that process will, you know, I feel optimistic that we'll, we'll get a lot closer to twenty, because I think there are so many folks that we haven't reached. And, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as of last week, I can't speak for, if anything happened in the last three days, but out of the families that were identified as being either bilingual or predominantly Spanish-speaking, all of them registered for the program. So that might have changed last week, it's possible, but I think it's just worth noting that, that was one of our concerns was, will, will there be additional barriers for families who use languages, Spanish, for a whole host of reasons, and I think they have reached that. Your team's done, and Tetera Torres, who I think deserves lots of commendation and praise as the key registrar for the elementary schools at the moment, to try to work through and answer questions if they come up.
Yeah, and it's been exciting that just in conversations I've had with families to say, you know, how do you feel about this? Or you have a three-year-old who's coming up, but what do you think? And, you know, your other students go to different school, how do you feel about that? And we've had a lot of folks who feel like, no, it's okay, as long as they're getting the bus there, and I understand, and I feel like it's really valuable. So I'm excited to talk about it. So really, just in terms of the lottery, the, the true lottery will be for students in group four. And if we have any students who register after the initial enrollment period in group three, I don't believe we have many at this point, but, so that lottery will essentially set up a list, a numbered list of where are you on the waitlist? So, you know, maybe two families would get in at this point, but if we have openings, then we would let folks know. So we can, you know, after the lottery, we'll let them know where they are, so they have a sense of likelihood.
Ms. Spencer, did you have a question? So I, I just want to make sure I understand this right. So there are nine families who have registered for groups one and two, and those are all of the families you've currently identified as bilingual or Spanish-speaking who we know of now.
Yes.
So, but we're holding eleven seats for, until the end of the, the summer, for those students. So how confident are you that we'll find eleven bilingual, or, I mean, because it- It seems like we always have this goal of having the fifty-fifty. Are you a little concerned or about having a different mix than what we had hoped for?
I think as long as we end up in the ballpark, we'll be okay. I mean, I think there's, there's a couple of layers, right? There's, the biggest issue in terms of the program makeup is just, do we have enough Spanish-speaking models to have a true two-way bilingual program? I, I feel like usually, in, from the patterns we've seen historically, we do have folks registering over the summer really consistently, and that our average numbers of Spanish speakers across the three schools, it was between fifteen and twenty-five in each year over the last five years. So, you know, I don't feel concerned that we'll be much below, maybe a little bit below.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think, you know, so we'll have more than eighty-eight kindergarten students next year.
Right.
And so, you know, well, we do all the outreach we can for kindergarten enrollment during the three days that we have it set up. This is a really typical pattern. Actually, this is a higher enrollment number than we had last year, and we have a lot more than eighty-eight kindergarteners this year. So we know that that's likely to be the case, and based on the past patterns, as Ms. Richardson said, this is, this is, if this, if you told me two months ago, this is where we are, I'd say, okay, that's actually sort of in the zone of what would be predictable. The thing that I feel best about is the, the percentage of families in groups one and two who opted into the program, because that would be a harder problem to solve. But so far, so good.
So I'm looking at the group three in particular, so the, the families that are zoned to Fort River that are choosing not to, to enroll in, or register for the lottery. Are, is there concern that that's going to be too large a number for one classroom?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, no, and that's the majority. Last time I checked, there were, I think it was like ten students who were zoned to Fort River who opted not to be a part of this.
I think it was less, yeah.
You think it was less than ten?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It was really small to begin with, which is great, because we don't want it to-
Oh, because I'm not including the number one. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm doing math wrong, because I'm not-
Right, not including the first. I think it was five or six in the initial enrollment. So of course we'll get more, but that's great. We need the space for those folks who don't want to be in the dual language as well, so.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. And I think the other thing to note, while it's not, I mean, I'm making a small hypothesis that's related to this agenda topic, is this was the highest number of registrants we've had for Fort River during the enrollment period and since the district ended in two thousand and ten. So typically that has the lowest, as you know, we've got overenrollments, it's the smallest elementary, eighty-six elementary school right now. And it was, at the end of the three-day registration period, it had the most number of enrolled kindergarten students for each year. So my hypothesis is this might have something to do with it. I don't have evidence, it's one year, like, there's a whole number of factors, maybe there's a lot of kids in Echo Hill or Amherst Woods, right? So it's hard to- So it's hard to come to broad conclusions, but it was a change in pattern that we've had for nine years now for English.
And you talked about the fact that there's a lot of interest and excitement around this program. There has been for quite some time, building up, I think, you know, much to your credit for, you know, pushing this out there and continuing to bring it up and talk about it. So I wouldn't be surprised if that's actually what's going on. I'm conscious of the time, because this was actually slated for just 10 minutes, and we've now gone to almost 30, so.
That's on my back, unless you want to add one.
Yeah, so I think the only thing to note is that MABE's continued to be a willing and interested partner. You know, they've asked us to attend a conference the end of next month about basically how to start a dual-language program that's high-quality without breaking the bank. Because we've tried to do things not only from the grant, but we've tried to do things with our own staff and how that's worked. So they continue to be partners with us, and we're happy to get back to them because they are interested in promoting dual-language education across the region. So I think just worth the committee knowing that they picked us in one other district to be a part of that. And then, Michael?
Congratulations.
And I just want to mention, you mentioned, I think I was saying something about outreach before, and it struck, just a reminder in my mind, I think, you know, if there's anything that the committee can do to also help promote those remaining involved in seats, and I know that the community has expressed an interest in doing that as well, you know, let's take advantage of all of those different networks that we have and that people, you know, typically use to spread the word around this, and especially for Spanish speakers in the community. You know, I think it's worth going that extra mile to try to, you know, share those news with them.
Yep. I'm happy to share any, you know, any information or ideas.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. Okay, so moving us on, the next item on the agenda is ADA update and capital update.
So I'll start with the ADA piece, and I don't know, Sean or someone, Jason, he is on, Jason P.C. wants to share on the capital. So, so the, sorry, there's so many notes, as people talk about it, pretty deep in the package. But there's two documents that I wanted to share with the committee. I would have ordered them, well, we'll start the way it is organized. So the first one at the top says ADA audit variation final summary. So this was organized, it took the report from KMA and Rupert Roy Clark, tried to make it a little more condensed and perhaps easier to understand. But really, some of the work KMA did was twofold. One was to try to look at what they listed as areas of non-compliance and organize them, but what could be done in-house. There's labor costs of our own that we pay, so there's only so many things that our staff can do, but things that can be done. What's single trade cost? And so those are things that are a little easier to done. It might involve working with an outside vendor, but it doesn't involve, you know, a large project. And then the complicated ones, so, you know, if you think about filling in a well that's in a library, right, like, you know, ones that involve, like, closer to what we would call construction, you know, maybe lowercase C, but true-
Contractor team, perhaps.
Exactly. So I thought it was a really helpful way to look through it. The second thing that KMA did is they held three meetings for users, so anyone in the community was involved, and CPAC was well-represented, as well as our administrative team, to represent what they hear from staff and from the students and families. And they were all invited, but the staff did, our principals in particular, did a great job of taking that information. So I think perhaps it's worth skipping to the third page of KMA's report, where it's preliminary recommendations, because that's what I'd like to share.
So that's on page three?
Yep, exactly. Some of this has already been done, like, for number one. What Rupert did is he assigned one or two complexity categories to those barriers, you know, the ones that could be done by our maintenance staff, the ones that are straightforward, but plumber, electrician, one trade, and then one that would involve, you know, additional study. And I think that's a key phrase, is they put a price tag as a rough placeholder, but would involve, you know, another place, but saying, yeah, this is what it would cost to fill in a well in a library. And really, they tried to help us with what a plan might look like in the three different complexity categories, and trying to understand the user and prioritize, not just based on what's easiest to be done, but also what has the most bang for the buck in terms of the user piece. And that's where principals were helpful in thinking about it. And you can see that the user concerns, I'm sorry, I was going to run a bit, but on page two, this is across all the schools in the district, you can see that this is what came from the users, both parents' guardians and then principals, about the largest barriers that they hear about affecting the experience of students and families. So what we're in the process of doing, once JCPC wraps up, is, which I think is pretty close, but we'll clear about in a second, is working with a dollar amount that potentially will be assigned to us and offered to us by the town, and then having another deep cut on how to take all the information, about user feedback, prioritization, looking at what staff capability is, particularly as of summer months, when some of this work really needs to happen, when students and staff aren't as present, and coming up with a detailed list with you, you know, likely next month, of what we'd recommend for what potentially it looks like from the capital plan, $100,000 to spend on ADA compliance as a next step. So we wanted to present just the report that KMA did to you, talk about the work, and come back next month with a more detailed articulated draft of something for you to respond to.
Great. I just want to give a, just a quick chance for the members here who served on the JCPC, if they want to add anything to this, or if there's any initial responses. You don't have to. Okay. Ms. Spencer?
I'm just noticing that Wildwood's excluded both on page two and then the ADA prior, audit prior decision, financial summary, excuse me. And Rupert calls that out, and I think it is worth finding out why that was included in, I just want to make sure that the documents-
Sure, we didn't have as much user feedback at school for-
I, you should do something about that.
For whatever reason. I think what I've talked about with the principals is that Fort River School, while not identical, is pretty close, and trying to see if, you know, even those two reports, if you remember looking at them, there were very minor variations in those ADA reports, but they were much more similar, much more analogous than, you know, compared to Crocker Farm or any of the other schools. So trying to see if the same challenges at Fort River are the case at Wildwood, it's a different student population, so we want to be really conscious that even if they're the same issues, the different student population because of different specialized programs may affect the user piece more, but we definitely need more outreach at Wildwood, so I want to acknowledge that point. But we didn't have as much feedback-
I'd be able to help it, please.
Yes, there is. Dangerous words to offer, but we'll take you up on that.
Mr. Nakajima?
Yeah, I guess it probably is worth saying a couple things about JCPC, and if Ms. McDonald or Ms. Wingano have something to add or correct on what I'm saying, please do. That, A, we did talk about this at JCPC. The members of the JCPC, I think, shared a question that members of our committee had, of trying to make sure that particularly for Wildwood and Fort River, we're looking to replace those buildings sooner rather than later. How do we think about prioritizing investments that aren't overly expensive and essentially can, would help with accessibility, but not, you know, have sunk costs that can't be recovered later? But I think beyond that, my recollection is that there was a lot of support for the base of requests that were being put forth by our schools, including the ADA investments. All right?
Yeah, okay. Great. It's good to hear. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, thank you for that. I, you know, it's really helpful, I think, to just get these regular updates in front of the committee, just to hear, you know, that the conversations are moving along. I would be curious also how we can get some input from Wildwood sooner rather than later, because these things seem to have a like of their own, and once they get put forth out there, you know, and money starts to, actually, hard money starts to get appropriated and discussed, we don't want to, you know, have a community feel like they're left out inadvertently or, you know, or just because of the process. So it'd be great if we can, at the next, you know, update, at least have an update on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So if there's nothing else on that, moving us on to the third quarter budget update, and I think this is Mr. Monahan.
So, I guess the first part, they can hear us without microphones?
They can hear us, so there's a mic that's pointed at us from the camera over here. But just speak loudly, please.
I will, especially if we start singing together.
Outdoor voice.
Go through that.
Yeah.
It's worth noting that this is a welcome for Senegalese and Cambodian students in the cafeteria, so that's the-
The music that we're hearing, yes.
Music, what you hear, yeah. It's original a little bit, it's nice hearing like this.
I think it creates a statement that there's an element of self-sacrifice in our parts, because it's, obviously, that's much more fun to play.
Yeah. Absolutely.
So with that note, third quarter budget report-
Not that the present company is a lot of fun.
I'll move through. So this is the most important quarterly budget report, because it's got the most information, and it's reported the fourth quarter, which at that point, things are too late to act on. So, a few changes from last time, which I'll point out, I'll throw through the highlights. So with three months remaining, the Amherst Woods schools are projected to finish under budget due to savings in health insurance. Salaries are projected 101,000 over budget, so that's one area that's changed. If you look back at your Q2 report, we were under budget at that point in payroll, I'll point out, in this folder, the last item actually did that. So the items that haven't changed much are the vacant instructional coach, that's a saving, that position hasn't been filled out yet, a vacant special educator, our special education par educator position, the additional custodial position that we added in response to the summer facility issues that we had. The new thing is the shift of the IDEA grant funds. I mean, recall, one of the initiatives we've been working on this year, and it's probably definitely 20 budget, is really two things. One, it's to better align our IDEA grant among the three districts. Over time, it's sort of been out of whack in terms of how much it supports the elementary district, how much it supports the secondary district, and so this is helping align that better. And the other piece is we're trying not to pay for positions as much out of that grant, because when you pay for positions, especially in particular teaching positions, you have earmarks and additional funds for retirement that you normally would not have to. So it actually reduces the amount of spendable funds you have from that grant. So we're trying to find other sources, other things to pay for from the grant. So one of the things we're looking to pay for is extended year programming costs for the summer. Those aren't positions, it's basically the teachers in Paris who run the special education summer program, but they're stipended positions. So that's the big change in payroll, that split it from a savings and payroll to an over version payroll. In contracted services, there was a deficit in Q2, it's gotten a little bit worse. Extended, special education extended year services, so it's sort of a funny thing. So the grant that we're shifting to cover extended year services, we're shifting it to cover this coming summer, extended year services, so it was definitely 20, it's going on August. This past summer is over budget. So next year it won't be over budget because the grant will be helping top set it. But this past year's extended year programming costs are over budget. In addition, crossing guards are trying to be over budget, it's another area that's sort of a constant struggle. So we try to find par educators or other part-time staff to do the crossing guard work, and we're unable to, we end up relying on the head custodians that go out and do the crossing guard work, and they're more expensive typically than what we had budgeted. So at a couple of the schools, we've had to have custodians do that work for most of the year. And, yes, and also just we've had elevated levels of overtime this year. We've had a number of, last year we had a really large number of clerical retirements, and so we've had a lot of new positions that have had more training and just more time to learn the position. In substitutes, we're on track to finish over budget by $13,000. We had a long-term leave absence, that's pushed those costs up. Special education, I think that's the same as Q2, it's tracking over budget. We had a new auditor placement that sort of went out after the budget was put in place, and that's pushing our auditor costs up and our transportation costs over budget. Expense accounts, sorry, expense accounts are tracking as expected. Those are discretionary accounts that the principals have control over and they expect enough supplies throughout the year. Any unexperienced funds in those accounts are typically used on PD at the end of the year for staff. And we have a lot of time in Canada this year because of snow, so we've got, I think, the most time we've had and a long time to do professional development, just to- Utilities are on track to finish under budget due to savings in heating costs at Fort River and electricity costs at Wildwood. I was kind of scratching my head, like, why was Wildwood under budget with electricity? And then I remembered it was vacant for two months of summer. There's no activity in that building very much.
That'll do it.
That makes sense, all right, I got it. So that's, that was an unintended benefit. Transportation is expected to finish under budget. We went out to quote our, all of our liability insurances that we have with the town of Amherst. And so for vehicles, we got, we changed our providers. We went from a charter, who's a local group here, with Hug International, who's a bigger group, like, that has a better rate. So our transportation liability vehicle insurance with that, probably, that went down about $14,000. School lunch, received a nice presentation a few months ago, that continues to be strong. Anything really above the 50% range is positive compared to prior experience. We've got, you know, one district where it's trending a little bit under last year, I think it's Crocker. Now Crocker's under last year, so it might be just a, kind of a quirky thing for this specific group of students this year, but in general, this year, the other schools are tracking better than last year. Risk and benefits are expected to finish surplus due to savings in health insurance, and also the same quote process we did for vehicle insurance, we did for liability insurance for our buildings, that also brought in some savings. So the next page, let's see the charts. So this chart, I updated with April numbers, so we can still see sort of the impact of the transition from being self-insured to fully insured, with about 11 plans from what we budgeted. And there was a big switch from PPOs to HMOs, which brought in savings as well. And in addition, the surcharge, which we thought could last up to two years, was suspended after six months. And you can see the liability insurance went down by 12,000 for our buildings. So we've got some available funds, and we're looking to spend it on this folded list in the next paragraph. Professional development, as I noted, at the school level, curriculum development, instructional materials and equipment, so we've reached out to principals in terms of, like, what are their needs, and other departments have what their needs right now. The dual-language curriculum materials that you just heard about, to facility equipment and supplies, and part of the budget, for what I'm pointing was that we prepay retirement incentives from that budget this year. We have the option of retirement incentives to pay them either in July or June, depending on what kind of budget year we have. And so this year, since it's a good budget year, we can pay a lot of this later. And any remaining funds will revert back to the town's general fund at year end.
Dr. Morris, do you want to say something?
Just, I think the other thing, particularly, actually all the items, particularly the first three, is the last two budget years, we've had to freeze the budget at certain times. So some of this also is letting principals, you know, letting them know what are the needs and what hasn't happened the last few years, because we haven't been in a position to kind of be able to spend. And that, people have filled that out because we've had a difficult budget year, people spend their lives. But I think it's worth noting just that context really matters in terms of things that just weren't purchased because of, you know, the opposite side of the health insurance level last year, and we did have to freeze the budget for a time a year prior as well. So I think, you know, they've done a really excellent job of prioritizing and talking to staff about what the needs are, what are things that just, you know, have been sort of backlogged in terms of purchasing. So just want to appreciate the process Sean runs to get that from principals and how they get that, it's like choosing of staff as well.
Yeah, it's focused on one-time costs, so we, you know, we can say nothing that's going to create a, occur anything in the future that we're going to have to worry about budgetary.
Like these positions are-
Yeah, exactly. And also, just the last couple of years, I don't feel, I think we've had many days for professional development, it's a lot easier to do professional development at the end of the year than it is to get people to come back over the summer. So it's sort of the best time is to tack it on right at the end of the year, while they're still thinking about it.
Mr. Nakajima?
Yeah, I guess, so obviously, this is the end of the third quarter, you have some good visibility into where we're going to end up. But I'm not, I guess this is, logically, this is a preamble to the next item, which is the requested transfer items. I'm sort of going to ask a question that might have a bearing on that here, which is, are you conservative at all in estimating what you think actually is available? Because I'm assuming, once you transfer it into another account, you've already worked out, had to operationalize it. So unlike the current budget, where you can kind of, at the end of the third quarter, and say, oh, it turns out we didn't spend all of it. The entire point of the transfers is it's likely that 100% of those funds will be expended. So is there, do you leave yourself a wiggle room?
Yeah, so the requests, requirements, or needs, it doesn't fully expend what we're projected to be available. There probably, there likely will be funds available that will go back to the town. And I don't think we're at any risk of going the other way, of thinking that we have a deficit, think of anything, we're going to return some funds to the town at year end. Which sort of makes sense again because of the surplus with the health insurance, that's sort of a big budgetary surprise this year. So, yeah, so I don't think we're at any risk of overspending.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, and to Sean's point too, while we certainly want to make sure our teachers and students and staff have what they need, you know, we do appreciate that they went up three and a half, to three and a half percent last year to support the budget, given the health insurance piece. So most years, as Mr. Mangano knows, I'm like bugging him incredibly at the end of June, being like, well, that's, you know, and this year we want to make sure the needs in that, and we got requests from the principals at different departments of the central office. But we also do acknowledge that there was additional support offered to us as well.
We had a question from the committee for Mr. Mangano or Dr. Morris?
Ms. Spitzer, one small question. Just going over the budget, is it too suggest?
Sure.
Well, I just wanted to highlight the ones where the town meeting added back in tuition, but I believe that was for after-school. So does this mean that going forward, we're also, we're not going to have to have any cuts to the after-school?
Yeah, we rolled over, I'll double check, but we rolled over the higher for next year in terms of tuition vouchers.
Okay.
So I'll just quickly go through the transfers.
Great, thank you.
So some of them, there's some regular operating transfers, just a principal or department had requested transfer from sort of a smaller. But the ten thousand is adding back the funds that were approved at town meeting for tuition vouchers. We sort of held that in control accounts until we knew the budget was in good shape and on the side we'd put it back if there was. District point support, so one of the more volatile budgetary items at the elementary level is homeless transportation and foster transportation year to year, and very mildly initially, we've seen a large increase, particularly in the foster transportation. And that, we don't get any reimbursement for. So a couple of years ago, the end of year report, they changed how you reported it, the separate foster homeless, now it was too fast. So now we report that, we don't get any reimbursement. There is an effort by the state to try to get some federal reimbursement for foster transportation. It's on a survey, all of the districts they reached out to, because we actually had a large cost for it, multiple for a budget. So we might get some money in the future to offset that, but it likely goes to town anyway, not directly to us.
And just a quick note on that, it sounds like part of the problem is related to the decline in the number of foster families, and therefore you have families that are actually spread out in a larger geographic area, and therefore the transportation is impacted by it, yeah.
The accessibility item that we just spoke about, so this is putting funds into the facility account to pay for that accessibility item. We're originally going to pay for that out of revolving fund, but didn't have the funds in the operating budget, we might as well keep the revolving fund whole. Payroll, this is the increase related to the shift of the grant, a couple regular operating transfers. Control accounts, again, this is the sort of the offset, so the difference between the increase and the decrease is the difference goes into control accounts, and that's the number that we can pay for some of those end-of-year requests from.
We should just read those, though, I mean, I think it's worth.
The end-of-year request?
Just that these amounts.
Oh, for control accounts, yes, so two hundred seventeen thousand is what's being transferred into the control accounts. And there's a large number actually there, because there's some other accounts already down there that'll be available for those end-of-year needs. More regular operating transfers, risk and benefits, that's the big source of savings this year. So in total, transferring out three hundred thirty-five thousand related to the savings in health insurance and liability insurance. Transportation, we're transferring out as a savings, this vehicle insurance savings. And utilities, same thing, the savings of heating, possibly Fort River, electricity at Wildwood, savings is going to that control account.
Mr. Nakajima?
Can I, can I go back to my question again? I know you're, I know you're going to put my mind at ease.
Sure.
But I just want to say that on the Q3 total expenses, you show us running three hundred sixty-eight thousand and change over budget.
Under budget.
Under budget. And then over here, we have three hundred sixty-seven and change being moved into other accounts for spending. So do we have more wiggle room, like I said earlier, that if expenses went a couple thousand one way or the other?
Yes.
Would still be covered.
Yeah, because of that three hundred and sixty thousand, which that's being transferred, then two hundred seventeen thousand of that is going into the, it's not being transferred for a specific use, it's being transferred into the control account, which is where basically where we put identified savings. And from that account is where we're going to approve the end-of-year requests. And so, again, we've received those requests, and we've compared that to what we anticipate having available. And we're not approving exactly up to that amount, we're approving something else. And at the Amherst budget level, there's really not too many surprises at this point. Payroll is pretty much known. And we don't have charter choice in our budget. Health insurance, health insurance is pretty stagnant at this point, so there's really, I don't anticipate any surprises.
But also, just mechanically, the point you're making is, even though we're approving up very close to the amount of, that we're under budget, in fact, you're monitoring very closely as you're approving through. So over the next few weeks, when you get closer to the end of the actual fiscal year, you're sort of making sure that you'd never spend or approve enough expenditures to bump up against that number.
Yeah, just so people have a sense of sort of our end-of-year process. So a couple weeks ago, last week actually, so we sent out a purchase order deadline. It goes all to department heads and principals, and it gives them till May fifteenth to submit purchase orders. And after May fifteenth, we cut off new purchase orders. So on May fifteenth, we still have plenty of time to sort of close out the year. We have an exact snapshot basically of what's out there. And then there's all this work basically that we do to close out purchase orders that have been opened and created that they aren't going to spend, because some people have open purchase orders, you can anticipate, and then they never end up spending it at all. So then we work to close it out. So there actually could be some more funds that actually get freed out as we go through that process of closing out the open purchase orders.
So just put another way, a hundred and fifty thousand of this is actually accounted for right now in terms of what is going to be spent. And then the remainder is basically just being held until an actual, a later date. It may or may not be used, but it sounds like probably not.
Yeah, there's some wiggle room between how much we anticipate being available and what we work with departments and principals to decide.
Great. There are no other questions for Mr. Mangano? There is a motion. If someone is feeling daring and ready.
I move to approve budget transfers and show them by.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. McDonald, are there any further questions or comments for either Mr. Mangano or Dr. Morris? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as stated, it is unanimous. Thank you very much. I do have to say that, just a quick note, it's remarkable, you know, we, as Dr. Morris mentioned previously, we were in a very different position last year to where we are this year. It feels a little weird. It's great, but it's also, you know, it just, it gives you a sense of the volatility of these budgets, right, to a certain degree. And so having a process like this where we can check in, you know, on a regular basis just to make sure that we're doing okay, and that we're really doing okay, is really important.
That's actually one of the reasons why, sorry, apologize. That's one of the reasons why I was asking, I mean, it may sound weird to the public to ask questions of, especially for someone who's been on like committee a couple of years, it's like, so how do we deal with surpluses in the budget? It's like, I kind of haven't had this problem.
We haven't had this problem.
So we haven't had occasion to ask the question of how are you spending extra money appropriately?
We usually have like smaller versions of this. There's always a little bit, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is fundraising policy, which is also a possible vote. Dr. Morris?
This is a policy that was passed by the region on March twenty-sixth about school fundraising, so that we have clear rules and approval processes to support, not really support school staff, but also community members about the ways in which we have acceptable fundraising and the ways we want to, you know, control for that. There's been a couple of issues that, not in our district, but more generally have come up about, you know, where does cash go? Who controls what? What's the accounting for it? And really it sets in place structures so that it supports the accounting we would want, not just for the sake of audit, but actually just for good housekeeping of when funds are being raised, and particularly if they're connected to the schools. So if anyone in the committee, or from the policy committee, or Mr. Mangano wants to add to it, but I don't know how much more we want to go into as much as a committee would like.
Again, this is a policy that was reviewed by the regional school committee in March. Mr. Mangano?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate this, so this is a student activities that has its own policies and procedures around it. This is really sort of staff, district-level fundraising initiatives.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee for either Mr. Mangano or Dr. Okay, there is a motion, if someone would like to make it.
I move to approve, I move to approve the new fundraising policy, as President.
Great, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nakajima. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. It is unanimous. Okay, next item on the agenda is a superintendent evaluation discussion. This is a conversation that has already started at the regional level, and it's not a surprise for all the members in this committee, because we had this conversation last year right around this time. And looking back through our previous agendas, it looked like we're basically on track more or less to the same exact timeline, which is happy news for me. But I also feel like we, you know, can always do better, just in terms of getting along to this a lot faster. However, I think for this cycle, what we did last year was that we, you know, had a very general conversation around this topic here in this committee at this meeting. And then in the next meeting, we reviewed the tool, the instrument that's actually used to evaluate the superintendent, had, you know, input and feedback at that point from the subcommittee that's been appointed by the regional subcommittee to deal with this process. And then the following meeting after that is when we would be reviewing Dr. Morris's artifacts and, you know, invoking all of the actual evaluation. So I don't know if there's any, you know, questions or comments from the committee at this point. This feels like it's fairly rote by now, which is funny to say, but it's true. But this is the meeting to do that. Or if there's anything you would like to add, Dr. Morris?
I think the artifact document will be ready before the next Amherst School Committee meeting, because, you know, because of the way it's structured for the all three committees. Well, the goals actually are more distinct than they have in the past. The actual elements and standards are actually better aligned than the goals are. It may not make sense, but that's the way it worked out. But it still makes sense to work on it as one collaborative artifact document, so that'll be ready for the next Amherst School.
Great.
Do we, do we have a sense of, like, what are schedules literally? Like, what meeting are we, like, which meetings are we planning on doing this stuff?
Well, so, you know, I think, again, going by the previous year's timeline, our very next Amherst School Committee meeting would be when we'd be reviewing the instrument and the goals. So that's in May. May twenty-first, thank you.
May twenty-first?
Yeah.
Wow.
I know. So again, this is, you know, feeling some urgency, if, you know, it's great that we're sort of on track, but at the same time, it feels like, it always feels like it's late. So May twenty-first would be the review of the instrument. Does that sound right to everyone here?
What, the review of the instrument or the artifacts?
The, well, the instrument, and we would be given the artifact by Dr. Morris presented the artifacts, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
That sounds about right, okay. And then the following meeting would be June eleventh, I believe? Is that right? No, that's the, that's the regional meeting, June eighteenth. June eighteenth. So that would be our actual vote.
That would be.
On the superintendent's evaluation.
So then the instrument would be put up by Ms. Warren, between, after the twenty-first, with time for us to all figure, fill out what we're doing.
Yeah. Does that work for everybody? Okay, great. And I will share that with Mr. Demling as well. Okay, if there's nothing else on this item, that really was just a quick review for everyone. Okay, well, move us along. Next item on the agenda is school committee meetings, format and location. So this has been a continuing topic of conversation for this committee. I have to apologize, I actually had hoped that we could meet at town hall tonight, and it was just a, I think, miscommunication. But, you know, I haven't heard from the committee any concerns, or very strong concerns anyway, about doing it in town hall. I'm taking that to be sort of a tacit approval of continuing to do that there. I've spoken with Dr. Demling, and he's actually fine with us continuing to have these meetings at town hall. So this is just a quick check-in. I think, you know, the, it sounds like, you know, Amherst Media is continuing to, you know, work with the school district to figure out the cameras from here, but town hall still seems to be a better option technologically anyway. I haven't heard anything negative from the community. I don't know if anyone here has about attending the meetings.
I'm not going to say anything negative. I mean, I was going to say actually.
Oh, please, no.
No, I mean, I'm not. Actually, what I was, I don't know if surprised is the right word, but I was just interested that the only, I'd gotten feedback from a few people, and the feedback was all positive because A, it's much easier to get there by public transportation, and B, it's reliably on the, it's reliably broadcast. And so if you want to stay home and put on PJs and watch the meetings, then you can actually do that.
Right.
And then email us what you think afterwards. And so like, so you start thinking about it that way, and you're like, all right, look, if that's, if that's actually a better mode for people to be able to participate when they want, show up when they feel like it, and watch it when they don't want to show up, then great.
Yeah. And I've been proceeding cautiously with this committee with this topic, because, you know, it is a big change, right? And, you know, I think a lot of people are used to, including myself, sometimes it's a, you know, I have to stop and think, where am I going for this meeting? But, you know, I've also heard positive things, you know, and that's great, so, okay. Dr. Morris, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so well, for the two remaining meetings for this school year, we'll contact town hall and just make sure that space is available and reply to you about that. But I'll assume that it is, unless you hear something differently from us. You know, it'll be on the agendas clearly, but let's just assume that we'll make that transition for managing.
Great, great. And then just very quickly, I think on the topic of meetings format, you know, again, I think it sounds like the committee is on the same page, just in terms of trying to keep these meetings, you know, as efficient as possible. Mr. Demling and I met with Dr. Morris to talk a little more, you know, thoroughly about this topic and to try to make some recommendations to the committee. I think from our perspectives, we didn't want to put any hard and fast rules on the committee. I mean, if there are topics that necessitate longer meetings, then we're going to have a longer meetings, right? And if there's, you know, a lot of interest from the community during public comments, you know, and there's issues that we really want to spend some time with, we will do that. But generally speaking, I think the idea is to try to keep these meetings to, you know, our sort of two-hour agendas. If they carry after two and a half hours, that we will basically take this to a vote for the committee, so that, you know, we can decide whether or not it merits continuing the conversation. And that requires, again, a lot of, you know, discipline on our part, right? Working very closely with Dr. Morris and the staff, you know, at the schools, to make sure that we're all staying on topic and we're staying close to our agendas. But it feels like the last couple of meetings have actually been pretty good, right? If, you know, the energy levels are a lot higher than they have been in the past, and hopefully that works for all the committee members. And I think that's what we'll just continue doing from now on. Great, okay. So next item on the agenda is a regionalization update. And Dr. Morris, is there anything you want to say on this, or?
I will leave it to the elected officials to.
That's kind of what I thought, yeah. So, and, you know, anyone who was at the last meeting on the thirteenth, we had our two towns meeting between, you know, Pelham and Amherst. It was a good meeting, I think, you know, very well-attended, we had a forum from all the different boards across both towns. People were very engaged and asking a lot of questions. And, you know, this has been a topic of conversation, not just at this, in this area, in this region among these two towns, but also at a statewide level about the, you know, the attempts from many communities to try to regionalize in order to increase efficiencies, you know, across school districts and all of that. I think the regionalization board has done a very good job of staying true to their mission and continuing to move this forward, and, you know, they have, you know, conducted themselves in that way. You know, Mr. Demling has chaired that board, but we also had members from both Amherst and Pelham who were serving on that board, and they have put in a lot of hours in the past year and a half, I guess, considering this question. So it's translated into an incredible amount of work and thought, you know, and care. The outcome of that meeting on the thirteenth was that, you know, Amherst town officials and members of this committee actually recommended against regionalization for many different reasons, primarily because of the uncertainty, you know, in relation to the new building reasons, primarily because of the uncertainty, you know, in relation to the new building project that we have just applied to the MSB four state. You know, there is so much uncertainty there that committing to regionalizing among the two towns feels like just a huge risk, right? And there's unknowns just in regards to who would actually, you know, own the new building, right? You know, whether or not that can negatively impact the application process and the whole feasibility study and all that. But I think beyond that as well, just, you know, some serious concerns, which is the reality for a lot of our towns around finances more generally, you know, and long-term impact on our taxes, and, you know, how we are going into these kinds of decisions that will have, you know, binding financial decisions for, you know, for not just our schools, but our towns and our communities more broadly. So, you know, from, Mr. Dumling had actually prepared an update to, you know, that, just some bullet points for me to share with you here. I think I've covered pretty much all of it. You know, what I will say is, you know, I think Palom definitely expressed disappointment during that meeting, and they were, you know, they had been interested in moving forward with this. Our two towns have had a very, you know, important longstanding relationship. We share superintendent, you know, we've had a good working, you know, neighborly relationship for many, many years. So we want to continue that. And so, this is, I think, a difficult conversation to have, right, at a community level. You know, it's important to be respectful and to understand the positions, you know, of both towns. So there were forums that had been planned prior to the two towns meeting. Those forums were taking place, one last night and one on Thursday this week, I believe, in Palom. Yeah, Thursday, the twenty-fifth. So residents from both towns have been invited to participate in those forums and to share their thinking on it. I don't believe the Amherst one was very well-attended earlier this week. I think it's just because of spring break, and, you know, it's just an awkward time to have a forum like that. We'll see what happens on Thursday night in Palom one, but, you know, possibly more or less the same. So the board, the regionalization board has yet to vote on this issue and to make the formal recommendation to either, you know, to do whatever it is that they're gonna recommend. We are expecting that they would come back to this committee at some future point, once they've had a chance to vote, meet and vote, and, you know, share their formal recommendation. But that is basically just the status of everything right now. I don't know if there's any other comments, Dr. Morris, Mr. Nakajima, or out, and, you know, Ms. Spitzer, if there's anything you'd like to add, having been at that meeting.
I think I would just like to add that I hadn't had a real good read on what Palom, the town of Palom, wanted, I think. I have a lot of concerns about what we're working with for regionalization, but I think one of the things that was not, I didn't feel like I received a lot of information, was the desire of Palom before we had the breakout sessions. And so, I'm just, I would just like to put out there that, and this is something I said, I think, around the table when we were meeting at the town, is that I think we should continue to be open to, and in every way we can, support Palom, because I do view them as members and folks that we really, you know, I, they're teachers in Palom, you know, and I have good friends who live in Palom. So I just, I want to make sure that we continue that relationship and do whatever we can to support their school system and obviously the kids.
You know, the only thing, yes, sorry, the only thing I'd add to it is, one, I completely agree with what Ms. Spitzer just said, that we should look for ways of continuing to partner, and I think if we're not, I am echoing something I said actually the second day, one from Ms. Spitzer said, is that I think we should actually be, the next step after saying no, so to speak, should be, okay, great, no, if we're not doing this, let's have really involved conversations about how we can find other ways of partnering that could provide some fiscal relief to Palom, not at the disadvantage of Amherst. You know, what are the ideas, and what can we do, including our own facilities and programming in schools? I know we're doing a lot of that already through Union Twenty-Six, so it's tough. And then the other thing is, just to put a fine point on something, in, along with the concern around the statement of interest and a lot of unknowns around what would it mean to regionalize, I really respected the conversation that came out of all the different people who are from Amherst about, we just went through a momentous change in government and charter. It isn't in some ways even complete yet, right? Like, we're still working through a lot of things, and the more we started to surface the complexity of all the different unknowns, some of which were fiscal, some of which were legal, some of which were, like, governance and representational, you just, like, you stop, and you say to yourself, oh, my God, we haven't even finished doing what we're doing right now as well as we need to. And the community hasn't had a chance to sort of digest all the changes, contribute to them, take our next steps together. This is not something we can do right now. And I felt like if, and I'm saying this, I'm trying to say this now on camera and everything, because it supports everything you both said, but I also think it's something that if the public recognizes and says, look, when we said no at this point, and you think about what we're trying to do and accomplish collectively as current leaders in this town, it's actually a good thing. And it's even a good thing for Palom in the end, because I'm not sure we were gonna be able to say yes to anything that would be useful to them at this point. And that's, you know, they need, they need things that actually help them, not for them to suddenly be stuck in the middle of, you know, between two towns, a really, really bad conversation. And I think the sense was, we were gonna end up there, whether we felt, we did realize it, but like, if we hadn't realized that, guess what? Six months from now, we were gonna be like an absolute mess, and that mess was gonna affect everything else we're doing, including the new school.
Yeah. It feels like a lot of these kinds of questions, timing is everything, right? And, you know, the timing on this, even though, again, you know, the board has taken a very long time to make sure that they are, you know, pursuing a process faithfully and authentically, it's still, you know, the timing for all the work that we have going on, and the government changes, as you mentioned, Mr. Nakajima, means that it's probably a bad time for, you know, for us to try to attempt this. And I would just add to this, too, I think, you know, Dr. Morris has sort of mentioned this a little bit, and, you know, I know you and I have had this conversation previously. But the, we had also been looking at this from an educational perspective, and also thinking about, are there certain efficiencies that could be gained by, you know, bringing the school districts together and, you know, combining our schools? And at the end of the day, they're not that great, right? And so, it's, you know, you know, it's probably not worth, in that risk analysis, you know, it's not worth taking that risk at this point in time to see if we can operationalize or gain, you know, some, some small efficiencies. We are also extremely uncertain about the state in terms of helping to fund a lot of the regionalization efforts that are taking place. And again, you know, my point's made at the very beginning of this discussion topic, that this is an issue that has continuously come up in very, many different communities, right, where the state has been encouraging communities to regionalize, and has made a lot of promises in terms of the money that they could potentially get, and then, you know, they're not actually realized, right? So, again, I think, you know, it was a useful conversation, a really useful exercise. At some point, if the communities, you know, are interested in something like this, I heard from officials anyway, you know, a openness to continuing the conversation and coming back to it at some point in the future. Great. Okay, thank you. So, next item on the agenda is accept gifts, and I know we have one gift, it looks like.
We do.
Excellent. I will take a motion, if somebody wants to read it. Mr. Nakajima?
I move that the school committee approve the following gift, Project Bread, number six eight five nine five, to support Teacher Champion Award School-Based Nutrition Program of Jennifer Reese's choosing at the amount of a thousand dollars.
Great, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions about this, comments? Mr. Morris?
Very briefly, so this is, Project Bread has been a partner, a food program, I think has been talked about a couple times here at attended events, and this was a request they made to Ms. Palmer, who was at our last meeting, around someone who's an educator who's making a huge difference in nutrition of children. So Ms. Reese, if you were in the committee, a couple years ago, you saw her come, she's our science and gardening coordinator, she's a part-time role, she does incredibly more than, an incredible amount in both in terms of the gardening, but also in terms of science education at the elementary level. She's only in the, only works for the, currently at the Amherst elementary schools. Remember, there's a slight FTE change to expand her reach a little further. So this was Ms. Palmer's idea of an educator who's making a huge difference in the nutrition of children, so I just wanted to add that.
That's great. Yay. All those in favor? All right, well, thank you very much to Project Bread. School committee planning. Dr. Morris, you want to run through?
Sure. So my understanding from the chair of this committee is that the Fort River feasibility committee will have a presentation at the next, they'll be ready for a presentation at the main meeting with the architects. So I just want to, that's what I heard from Mr. Salvin, and if you had any different shares.
I think May twenty-first will censure it.
Yeah. I haven't heard any difference since you asked.
Let's check in with him and make sure.
We will.
Yeah.
Considering how soon May is, I think we're gonna be, we should be done. It's kind of, kind of close.
Yeah, I did confirm this with him, but it's probably worth going back to that.
It's probably worth going back, yeah.
Another one that has been kind of floating in our agendas, but we'd like to nail down and have at the next meeting, is a presentation on ALIS at the elementary level. ALIS is the acronym that describes the current approach towards risk management and safety, school safety, and actually, the Amherst Police Department, a representative would come in to talk about what they've done at the elementary, and particularly how that differs from what we've already heard, for those of you who are here, where it was a secondary approach, and obviously, the age of the kids makes it very different. Kids aren't involved in training and planning, but the staff is. So we wanted to come back and make sure that there was a presentation, that there's an interest in the committee of that. We have school improvement plan drafts from Parker Farm in Wildwood, that has been worked on, but that's a date that they would need some brief presentation last time. A draft for ADA and capital, particularly to the ADA aspect of the capital. I think the grade six through eight, the sixth grade piece that we talked about today, if we could keep it in, if we could keep it in the superintendent update, I mean, I'm open to making agenda topic, but I think I'll be able to do that.
If that makes sense.
Give it due time in that update. And that's what I have at the moment.
Oh, superintendent evaluation, sorry.
Nothing important.
Nothing important. Great. Anything else in the committee for topics?
I would just like to, Ms. Spitzer?
I'll be on vacation, or, no, I'm gonna work trips. I'll be, I'll be in Dallas, so unfortunately, I'm able to take time.
You won't be here majorly first.
And I know I've been the one of, I think I'm the only person, this committee is also on the evaluation subcommittee, so I think we should make sure we communicate as one end ahead of time.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Okay, fantastic. I will take a motion. Mr. Nakajima?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
There.